Last summer and last spring, when we watched the uprising in Egypt, I was moved. And I saw the military in Egypt stand down, and I saw the people rise up. And I saw that's how democracies are built. That's how democracies are built. Have we learned nothing from Martin Luther King? Have we learned nothing from Gandhi?
The program as it's going to be is going to be a slideshow. So I don't know how that will work for the media. It's going to be about 15 minutes. And then there's going to be about five or six speakers talking from a variety of perspectives. And I'll introduce them as the time comes. But before we get into any of those things, I wanted to invite John Marshall, who's the senior warden here at the Trinity Episcopal Church, to come and welcome us.
Thank you very much, everyone. Welcome to Trinity Church, everyone. We're glad to have you. And one of the things that really gets to us is the whole issue of service. And one of the things that, you know, when we were approached by this, you know, by the NATO and G8, NATO summit protesters, you know, and they gave us that idea and with their proposal, we kind of felt like we had to embrace it with open arms because that's the way we see it. And as in Matthew 25, you know, Trinity sees welcoming the campers as part of the serving Christ in the stranger, the sick, the prisoner, the hungry, the thirsty, et cetera. And, you know, and we see the extension of our hospitality, you know, to the NATO summit protesters as part of our mission. And that's because much of the marchers are protesting the proliferation of aggression and war as opposed to using needed resources to help the hungry and the poor in this world. And that's right up our wheelhouse. And so when they came to us and we said, you know, there is no question in the congregation, and this is a congregational thing, this is something that's not spearheaded or designated by our pastor, this is something that we decided that we were going to do. So, you know, I wanted to welcome you guys and thank you for, you know, for coming here. And we'll explain a little bit more, I guess, about, you know, what the goings on in the summit is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you've been watching the media lately, which is pretty hard not to do, you think that the problem in the city of Chicago is the protesters, that the violence of the protesters, the, you know, the unruliness of the protesters and a variety of other things like that. I've seen a few videos that are actually quite shocking. One of them showed the police preparing for weapons of mass destruction. Another article the other day, as you probably saw in the Sun Times, was about them reopening Joliet Prison to house all of these thousands of protesters. Today, there was a very excellent article by Andy Thayer in the Tribune on the misrepresentation of the protesters. And I don't know if you realize it, but beside that article, they put a picture of the Black Bloc, if you will, of the anarchists, so as to say that the entire protest movement is the Black Bloc. So it's just been portrayed in a variety of ways as the problem is the protesters. Tonight, we want to try and put the focus where it really belongs, on the NATO and G8. As you know, the G8 was driven out of the city by the protest organizing, even though we haven't even hit the streets yet. So, I mean, we can be pretty proud of that. And President Obama has scorned them in a little hideaway called Camp David. But nonetheless, NATO and G8 are inextricably linked. And so anything that is said about NATO tonight also is being said about the G8 because they are partners in the crime of poverty and war. And that's been the sort of the headlines of everything that's being said by candidates. So tonight, we're going to start with a slideshow presentation on NATO. I'm pretty sure it's focusing primarily on NATO, is it not?
Combination.
It's a combination. This is even better, thank you. It's actually a 45-minute video. And it's available online, right? At AFS, the American Friends Service Committee's website. I watched it a while ago. It's excellent. But tonight's version is going to be a 15-minute version. So, and they hope it to be 15 minutes.
Fantastic.
Okay. So we're going to have Margaret Jackson and Darlene Grimick come and present, Barbara.
So thanks, everyone, for coming. Just want to say a little bit about this PowerPoint presentation that we did. And basically, it was done with some college interns and then seasoned by some Chicago Public High School students who took it and said, you know, these are the things that are important to us in the community and in high school. So you'll see it as a presentation from a college research point of view, but also seasoned by high school students from CPS. So you'll see their perspective, hopefully, mixed in this.
As Father said, that G8 and NATO are linked, but they don't tell you that. They have us thinking that because G8 is being held in Camp David, that it's totally separate. So what is the controversy about? You've heard about, as I said, G8 and NATO, where you've heard about it, you know, on TV. And but no background information has been given. So what are NATO and G8? Why should I care? What does it mean for my community? What can I do? The G8 is, it stands for the Group of Eight. It's a group of some of the most powerful economies in the world, plus the European Union. The G8 countries consist of the United States, Canada, United Kingdom, France, Italy, Germany, Japan, Russia. And the European Union, it's not a full member, but it does hold all the obligations and privilege as the eight members without membership. And it doesn't have a right to host or to chair the G8. But if you think about that list, I don't know if any of you are good at geography. I'm not. That what's missing? The United States, Germany, United Kingdom, Canada, France, Italy, Japan. Yes?
The rest of the world.
The rest of the world. And interesting, the rest of the world, really, if you think about it population-wise, has the most population. So what does the G8 do? It sets the agenda. And I know my background is in accounting. And, you know, you look at the unemployment is 10% or higher, depending on what group of people you're talking about. But they say the stock market is doing great. So go back to that. You know, as I said, there's the eight countries. Someone else said what was missing. Next screen. Stop right there. So you have the G8 countries in the black and the rest of the non-G8 countries in the green on that first circle. So you have eight countries basically controlling, setting the agenda around politics, economy, and even war. They meet to discuss policy options that are not compulsory, but the G8, they have the clout in the world bodies, remember those countries that I just mentioned, they have the clout and the muscle to bring it to what to decide, whatever they decide upon, to make it happen. And because of this clout, many of the policies that they suggest in their discussions, they do come to fruition. They do happen. And if a country feels like they don't want to do it, we have NATO. So they have their own military. So they can set the agenda. And if you don't want to go along with their agenda, then they got their own private military forces. And G8 pays, they paying 75% of the NATO budget. So NATO will pay attention if someone's paying 75% of your budget. NATO, there are 28 countries in NATO. And as you look at this screen, you see that six of the G8 members are also part of NATO. Go back. The countries in red are part of NATO. And think about, remember I said NATO is a military arm? So if they make a... Excuse me. If they set a policy or economic policy, they have the wherewithal to enact it. Think about Libya. Think about Afghanistan. Why was NATO founded? Well, it was founded in 1949 after World War II. So why would the US want to be part of military alliance with European countries after World War II? In the words of the first Secretary General Lord Ismay, NATO's founding motto was, "Keep the Russians out, the Americans in, and the Germans down." It's kind of changed, as you see, that Germany is part of NATO and since the Cold War, but it continues to expand and find new reasons to justify existence. Rather than phase itself out, it has been in search of a strategy. So as I said, what does NATO do? NATO is a military arm of G8. So, and G8 has the power to set policy, economic policy, political policy. And so how do they do that? They control resources, the global resources. It's a little quote here in my notes. It's like the hidden, I had to think about this, I really had to think about this. "The hidden hand of the market will never work without a hidden fist." McDonald's, the restaurant McDonald's cannot flourish without McDonnell Douglas, designer of the US Air Force F-15. This is a quote by New York Times journalist Thomas Friedman, who has been a proponent of globalization. But I had to think about that. McDonald's would not exist without McDonnell Douglas. And if you think about it, remember, we're talking globally. So McDonald's could not spread, could not expand unless NATO or the G8 and NATO opened up markets. So corporations could not expand unless NATO enforced policy to open up markets for corporations. So they use military solutions around cybersecurity, climate change, extreme weather, population transfers, water shortage, global warming. Basically, any directive that G8 sets, then they use NATO to try to get that in motion. So it goes back to that 99% and 1%. So you have, but we're talking about countries now. So you have the few controlling the many. Remember, these are graphics by teenagers, too. And I'm going to turn it over to Darlene to tell you why she should, why you should care. You know, what does it mean to our community?
So a lot of times, we think, you know, so there's these international meetings coming here, you know, so they inconvenience us for a few days, but what does it have to do with Chicago? And I think what we want to point out is exactly how much of Chicago taxpayer money go to the military per each year. So it's $9.8 billion. And when you think about it, not just like, that sounds like a lot of money, but like, these are the things that, these are the ways, the priorities that have been chosen, and these are the things that we're missing, we see missing in our communities. We see Head Start slots missing, we see elementary school teachers missing, and we see scholarships, you know, the big focus people have seen on who can go to college and who can't go to college. So those are the kind of interests and concerns that we have. The other thing we want to go to, you know, think about is like healthcare, you know, of course, a big concern, especially as they're cutting down health clinics in Chicago and everywhere in the country. And then how much do people receive for it? So if we were to use that $9.8 billion in the Department of Defense for other resources, the last one there is 1.2 million veterans could receive veterans benefits. So those are all important things to us in communities, and we don't see that prioritized when NATO/G8 becomes the major focus. So what are the costs of the people of Chicago? It's a hand of the G8 squeezing it into, or NATO squeezing the world into the hand of the G8. So squeezing out resources, blood of soldiers and people in communities into the hand of the G8, which is making money for them. And we thought that was a really important characterization, and we thought it was really good understanding of like, you know, the very simple basics of how this is working to everybody. And so we're concerned about how all this comes out and what the cost is to people in Chicago. So one of the things is the economic cost. We're looking at, you know, jobs, education, and healthcare. Are there, you know, those are issues that we hear every day in our neighborhoods, in our homes, in our communities. And so those are the kind of things that we are concerned about. And that we think that, you know, the city has gotten $65 million for security for the NATO/G8. We think that money could be used better elsewhere, don't you?
Yes.
So we think that we, as the 99% of Chicago, should also be looking at how we should request those resources not be spent in that way, but they be spent towards our communities. Because when we hear in the City Hall that there's not money for those things, somehow there's money for this event going on. So we concerned about that. The other thing we're concerned about is the kind of characterization of people that are opposed to the NATO and G8. And we think that there are many people that have been working to do things like get a permit, to have a march, you know, which is going to come very close to this church, and people that are trying to bring people together. And we think that the city has been an obstacle in that process. People have tried to get a permit, that's been almost year-long process in getting it, and they still haven't finalized the route, or they're still working on some of those details. You know, the city passed an ordinance that doubled the fines, also requiring people to, you know, have many, many of their liberties of sight and sound and being able to make a protest in the way that they want to protest, limited. So we see that that's a problem. The other thing that we were taking a look at is the militarization of the police. We know that some of the money has been spent, of the security money, has been spent on getting the police new armor, is what I want to call it. And we just want to show you a picture of what police look like in 1968 in New York City for the, actually, in the Chicago Democratic National Convention on the left. So there are the blue short-sleeve shirts with a helmet and a billy club. In 1995, for the Million Man March, the uniform, as you could see, got a little more military-looking and had a few more, had another nightstick, had a little radio thing. And so in 1995, the police got more militarized. This is what we expect, and this is what Occupy experienced in New York City. So just take a look at how, just in a visual way, how more militarized the police have become in our communities. And we expect to see those same kind of outfits out for, which is, you know, for the demonstrations coming. And that's fairly intimidating, and it's meant to be intimidating. And we don't expect, we don't expect that of our police force. They're supposed to do something for us, aren't they? Instead of look like they're military people that are aiming to hurt us. And we've heard a lot of things on the news, people have reported it. You know, I heard on Saturday that Fox News was reporting that they were preparing hospitals in Milwaukee for whatever the nuclear event that was going to happen in Chicago during the summit, so they could, they could house all, so Chicago could evacuate to Milwaukee. How would that happen? But even if you don't think it could happen, it doesn't make any sense, it's meant to frighten people. And some people, it certainly does. The rest of us just go, what are they talking about? So anyway, this is one of the things that we're concerned about, is how the police. And, you know, so the question we have is, how do we keep the mayor and the city accountable? And I think a number of our other speakers are actually going to address that, too. So I'm going to, we're going to stop our little slideshow here, and we hope that we've covered the basics, and then I think our other speakers are going to fill in some of this. But this, how this question of how we keep the city accountable is really something for all of us to think about, and how do we, how do we begin to look at this? So thank you for putting up with our technical difficulties.
Thank you, Margaret, Darlene, and Jesus, who is our technical expert over here, am But the first person that will speak for us will be Mary Dean. She is co-coordinator with Voices for Creative Nonviolence. She has been a peace activist for 25 years and has traveled to conflict zones in a variety of places, including Central America, Israel-Palestine, and Iran. Mary served six months in federal prison for nonviolently protesting the US School of the Americas at Fort Benning, Georgia. And this year, she led two delegations to Afghanistan with Voices, spending seven weeks there. The second person that will speak for us is Ben Meyer. He's with the National Lawyers Guild. I don't have much more on Ben, but maybe he can tell you more about himself when he comes up. The third speaker we'll have is Shahid Bhutar, who's the executive director of the Bill of Rights Defense Committee and the People's Campaign for the Constitution, whose efforts to defend civil liberties and constitutional rights and rule of law, who, that is their org, their goals. He is a constitutional scholar, grassroots organizer, a civil rights lawyer, an independent columnist, musician, and a poet. I think I got it all right. And then we're going to have a veteran, Aaron Hughes, speak for us, speak to us. He's the organizing team leader for Iraq Veterans Against the War, and he's also the curator and chair of the Arts Committee at the National Veterans Art Museum. He was in the Illinois National Guard from 2000 to 2006, and in Iraq for 15 months from 2003 to 2004. Since he has returned, he's gotten an MA in art and has been trying to use the arts, if I'm quoting correctly, trying to use the arts to highlight the struggle for human rights and against war. And then we're going to have Eric Fernandez, who is the national, from the National Nurses United Organization. I just actually found out about them about three months ago, shows you how slow I am. But the National Nurses United is an organization with 150,000 members in the United States and is the largest union and professional association of registered nurses in the United States. So without any saying anything more, I'm going to invite Mary Dean to come up. The goal is that she would speak for about five, six, seven minutes, and each person would do likewise, and then we'll have questions and comments and so forth. Mary, hi.
Hi, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, welcome, everyone. It's good to be here. Last year, I spent seven weeks in Afghanistan, leading two delegations with Voices. And the first thing I noticed when we went through Dubai, you know, we had to switch planes there, I went into the terminal, and it was just filled with military contractors, you know, wearing their military clothing, some like khaki, you know, kind of military-looking clothing. When I got to Kabul, I could not believe, like, the infrastructure there is just completely crumbling. There are some new buildings, and I have traveled to many capitals around the world and Third World countries, and it was just the worst capital I've ever seen. There's no sewer systems, there was sewage running in the streets, you just, and pollution is one of the worst places in the world for that. And since the US invasion of Afghanistan in 2001, at least 20,000 Afghan citizens have been killed in the war there. And there's over 49 countries involved in this occupation, and there's only, you know, 30 million people there. But everywhere you go, you see these military bases popping up all over. We visited a refugee camp on the outskirts of Kabul, and right across the street, there's a military base that goes, you know, it's more than a mile long. You can't believe it. The average life expectancy in Afghanistan actually dropped this past year from 44 to 42 years old. When I heard that from a young woman who's a medical student, I found it hard to believe, and then I did verify it. Millions have fled from the violence there and have been displaced to the capital. It's a city of about 1 million, whereas a few years ago was, well, it was 1 million a few years ago, and now it's actually 5 million. And it has the worst air quality in the world, like I was saying. There's at least 300,000 internally displaced people there in Kabul, and there's thousands of refugee camps. You see them all over the place. They live, you can't, you can't believe the conditions. There's like mud walls with plastic tarp. And they actually get a fair amount of snow there. They get up to a foot at a time. And this was one of the coldest winters in recent history. And 25 infants died this winter, as well as over 40 people just in Kabul in these refugee camps. And that's actually a violation of international law. They have little access to food and water, there's limited possibility for work, you see men waiting on street corners everywhere, looking for day labor. There's no healthcare or access to electricity. And over 60% of the population there is suffering from PTSD, you know, during, from over 30 years of war there. And they also have other significant mental health problems. There's been protests for years against NATO's counterinsurgency techniques. Drones are dropping bombs on civilians there daily. There's 3,000 night raids a year, which is one of the main problems, you know, that prevented the signing of the Strategic Partnership Agreement, which actually was signed, I don't know if you heard about that, a few days ago, when President Obama made a surprise visit. And he went to the Bagram Air Force Base, which is very well-known for torture in Afghanistan and indefinite detention. And that's where he signed what is called the Strategic Partnership Agreement, which will keep US troops there until the year 2024. So the war is definitely not ending. Anti-US sentiment is only increasing there. The security situation is getting a lot worse. I called my friends the Afghan Youth Peace Volunteers, which is an amazing group that's working for nonviolent solutions to the war. Because they were staying, they stay in Kabul, some of them, and they were right in the midst of all this bombing going on when I called them. And it just creates terror and anger among the people. It costs the US taxpayers $10 billion per month for the war in Afghanistan. And the military contractors that I talked about before are outside of legal and legislative scrutiny, and they now outnumber US troops there. Over 1,900 US troops have been killed so far. Just a few months ago, a couple months ago, one of my childhood friend's son was killed. So it's just happening, I'm sure you've heard in the news on a weekly basis. And you also hear about the civilian deaths. There were those 116 civilians in Kandahar last month, including nine children. And for the Afghan people, this is nothing unusual. We don't hear about all the civilian killings that are happening over here. Malala Joya, who's going to be here for the NATO march, does not see this as an anomaly. And no one is surprised there about this. It's a constant occurrence. And the media wonders why people aren't out protesting more. Well, the government of Afghanistan has actually issued an order that people are forbidden to protest, so they're risking their lives to go out there on the streets, but it still does happen. When we were there a year ago, there were actually major protests going on in Kabul after the killings of some civilians. When I was in Kabul, I visited a hospital. It's called the Emergency Center for Civilian Victims of War, and it's actually run by an Italian not-for-profit, and it provides amazing free care to the victims of war there. That's the only hospital that's been built in Afghanistan since the war began. So our $10 billion a month is not going towards social services, that's for sure. What social services we do pay for are, you know, designed and operated by private companies that are making profits off of it, and it's not helping the people there. When I visited that hospital, being a physical therapist, I had the opportunity to accompany the doctors. I spent four hours there, just going from bed to bed, with one bed after the next, filled with patients with the worst wounds I've ever seen. And I've worked in healthcare 23 years. Yeah, anyone who's pro-war, I can't imagine after seeing something like that, that they could defend it. I saw children with three limbs blown off, you know, blind. It was just horrific. And also, the majority of the Afghan people, according to a poll last year, want the war to end. So the majority do not support, you know, the Taliban and/or NATO for that matter. They just see it as destroying their country. If you go around and ask people in the rural areas, most of them have no idea what 9/11 is. They have no access to the media there. So only 6% have the internet. So there's no military solutions to the problems in Afghanistan. We're just propping up a corrupt government, and we're paying off corrupt officials and war... warlords. So anyway, so I invite you all to join us on the 20th and to put a stop to this situation and work to end the war there. Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Ben Meyer to come up to talk about, he's from the National Lawyers Guild, to talk about some of the situation on the ground here in Chicago.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Meyer. I'm an attorney with the National Lawyers Guild. I've been working with Cangate and other organizations in preparation for the NATO protests for the last several months. Many of us know about the ordinances that were passed in January of this year that were specifically targeted at the NATO protests, and I think it's important to talk about some of the things that were included in the new ordinances. One of those things is a new requirement that people who apply for permits for parades, which are activities that interfere with traffic signals, usually they're street marches, must disclose vehicles on wheels and banners that are large enough that they must be carried by two people or more. They must disclose the size and dimension of the banners, and they must describe vehicles and acoustic devices on wheels. This is a new requirement, and it's a really onerous requirement for anyone who applies for a permit for a street demonstration, particularly a march, as this is a parade demonstration requirement, because oftentimes, we don't know exactly who's going to turn up to a march. It could be a variety of community organizations, it could be a variety of organizers. The people who apply for a march may not always know what types of banners or vehicles that these organizers and community members are bringing. So it presents a real challenge for people who are trying to organize demonstrations and may constitute an infringement on people's First Amendment rights. So that particular provision is very concerning. Another concerning part of the new ordinances is the new authority the city has to deputize licensed law enforcement officials. It doesn't specify who these licensed law enforcement officials are. It could include anyone. Doesn't even specify what types of licensing they need to hold. And that same provision, there's no, the other thing I'd like to point out is there's no sunset provision for the two sections of the ordinances that I just described. Those are with us indefinitely. I think that in the beginning of the campaign to pass these ordinances, Mayor Emanuel indicated that these would be temporary ordinances that would be phased out when NATO was over, and that's just not the case, with the exception of one section of the new ordinances. So the new restrictions on parades are permanent, the ability to deputize licensed law enforcement officials is permanent, and there's also new authority in these ordinances to put up new surveillance devices, including cameras, all over the city. It authorizes the superintendent of police to work in consultation with other agencies within the city of Chicago and determine where these new surveillance devices can be placed. Now, as you know, there are many, many cameras already in the state of Chicago, and this gives, the new ordinances give the city the authority to add even more, which is concerning to anyone who's engaging in any type of First Amendment activity and any other activity around the city of Chicago, that their activities are being monitored by the federal government without cause. As you know, Cangate applied for a permit to march on May 19th, which was the opening day of the G8 summit. They replied in the early days of January. The city quickly agreed to give them a permit for their march route and announced that it would be respecting people's First Amendment rights during NATO and G8. And this was lauded as an example of how it would do that, by granting people who wanted to participate in First Amendment activity permission through a permit to do that. As you all know, I believe it was in March, we learned that G8 would be moving to Camp David, and at that time, Cangate decided, well, you know, there's not going to be a summit on the 19th, so we're going to move our march to the 20th. And they applied for the exact same route that they applied for in January. Well, their permit was rejected. The city rejected that route for March, I'm sorry, excuse me, I keep saying March, I mean May, for May 20th. It's May 19th and May 20th. May 19th was the opening day of the G8 summit. May 20th is the opening day of the NATO summit. So this exact same route, a day later, suddenly became unacceptable and untenable, and it became something that the city said would cause undue traffic disruption, largely because there were going to be 50 motorcades associated with 50 heads of state that were going to be traversing the Chicago area, and they had to provide space on the streets for these motorcades to get by. But we took this denial to a hearing before the Department of Administrative Hearings, and it turns out that officials from the state of Chicago had no idea how many motorcades there would be on the streets on May 20th. They had no idea the number of cars associated with those motorcades. They had no idea the times those motorcades would be on the streets, and they had no idea where those motorcades would be originating from. So their specific rejection of a particular route could not possibly have been based on the location and timing of these motorcades, because they had no information about where these motorcades were going to be at what times. And so it became apparent that the reason they were doing this was for the sake of, and what they asserted in their denial letter is that they did not have sufficient resources to both police the streets of Chicago and protect the demonstrators and non-demonstrators that were associated with this march. When Chief Kirby got on the stand, she said that we could police this route and carry our ordinary duties in the city of Chicago if we had to. So this route was denied as a matter of convenience for the city of Chicago, not because it was impossible for the city of Chicago to distribute its resources in such a way that this march could occur along the route that the organizers wanted it to. And so unfortunately, we lost in the administrative appeals court, I'm sorry, the administrative hearing, but Cangate was able to negotiate a different route with the city. Throughout this process, the city has promised a number of different things, including access to Patrilo Banshel and promised an endpoint for the rally at 23rd and Indiana. We learned several weeks ago, or a couple weeks ago, that the Secret Service would be setting up a security perimeter around McCormick Place that would preclude Cangate from ending its rally at 23rd and Indiana. So now that Cangate is ending its rally at 22nd and Michigan, which is far away from where any of the NATO delegates will be meeting. So they're not within sight and sound of the rally, sight and sound of the summit, which is very concerning for First Amendment reasons. The Secret Service has said that its perimeter was set up according to the specifications of their engineers that are experts in explosives, and that's why Cangate and anyone else will not be allowed to get within sight and sound of the NATO summit. So I think that there are, you know, there are several concerning things that happened, and it seems apparent that the city has set up several roadblocks to First Amendment activity in Chicago, and that's not the role we want our city government to be playing, and that's not the role we want the federal government to be playing either.
Thank you, Ben, very much. We're going to have a follow-up with some of this information now from Shahid Butar, who's with the Bill of Rights Defense Committee. Shahid?
Thank you, sir.
Did I say it right?
You did.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And thank you all for coming out and standing tall for the values that we would hope our country to stand for. I'm going to try to link some of what's happening here in Chicago around the restrictions on dissent to the international platform that NATO represents, to try to essentially tie together the defense and the offense that your proud city is playing at once. There are a couple reasons why Chicago is particularly relevant to the nation at this particular time. I'll give a nod to my colleagues at the AFSC, their graphic contrasting the cops in the 1968 Democratic National Convention, which is not so far removed in our nation's history, right? Except that now, the capacity of the state to suppress dissent is greater. This city is also obviously the roots of our president. And it's interesting to think about the relevance of Chicago as his home to the national debate around these issues that's playing out in other places, like in Charlotte, where the DNC will be held this year, like in Tampa, where the RNC will be held this year. Remember, each of the cities where the RNC has been hosted in each of the last, you know, the last four years, and then eight years before that, Minneapolis and New York, were the site of pervasive civil liberties violations, outright police violence, that led each of those cities to pay out millions of dollars to people who were merely exercising their rights enshrined in the Constitution. And the question before this city, and essentially you all in your collective macrocosm, is should Chicago once again go down that route? Should your tax dollars again be used to pay judgments for police abuses? So I want to talk a little bit about last year, 2011, and set up this year. 2011 wasn't just the year, so we talked about this city being the source of Obama's roots. It's also where his chief of staff, Rahm Emanuel, obviously, has come home to roost. And Emanuel's return to Chicago in 2011 wasn't the only thing that happened, and there were a number of key events that happened last year that are important to remember to place some of what we're talking about now in context. So my colleagues at the AFSC talked about the sort of dynamic around military money looking for purpose. You know, what happened last year around this time, this very week, in fact, if I don't, if I'm not mistaken? Finally, Osama bin Laden was killed, right? So the basis for the surveillance, the police state that we've been increasingly living in over the last 10 years, itself has been called into question, right? We see countries around the world clamoring for rights that we here take for granted and increasingly let slip between our fingers. And let's look at Egypt, because I think it's a particularly salient case when we think about some of the things that happened in Tahrir Square that might be likely to happen here in Chicago. So everyone remembers when in Tahrir Square, the peaceful protesters there were picking up after, you know, days of pitched battles in the street against their police and military, tear gas canisters with big black stenciled letters on the side, "Made in the USA." That's what it looks like when military money needs somewhere to go. What it looks like are sound cannons deployed in your streets, right? These are high-tech military equipment made for the use of the military in foreign theaters, now brought home to be applied against our own populations. It looks like private security contractors that are advising businesses and residences all around the South Loop area, creating this false sense of alarm. And why do you think that false sense of alarm makes sense for them to promote? Because they have a financial interest in it, just like NATO has an interest in promoting conflict, right? Just like we see the military-industrial complex operating abroad, you now see that chicken like Rahm Emanuel coming home to roost here in Chicago, right? There were, you know, recently urban warfare exercises here in the city with big shows of military force and sophisticated attack helicopters flying around. And there was another thing that happened in 2011. In the very end of the year, we saw our own federal government adopt a domestic military detention authority that is worse than anything the Bush administration ever contemplated. Never, at any point in the Bush administration, did it assert the authority that has now been enshrined in statute under the National Defense Authorization Act. There were a handful of instances of detention and military custody under the AUMF, but never at the scale that the NDAA contemplates. And it's not criminalizing entire ethnicities like rounding up the Japanese. It's not raiding or detaining peaceful activists for what we believe. It's not rounding up and imprisoning all of the Ron Paulies. It's a power that alone could encompass each of these, right? How do we claim to live in the land of the free when we are subject to arbitrary government authority to lock up anybody and throw away the key? We are living, you here in Chicago are living at the cusp, the tip of the spear of an empire that is turning its weapons home. And we see in the response to your mobilization against the international aggregator of this institutionalized violence, a microcosm of that very same violence applied toward you and your communities and your guests. I do want to briefly just riff on some of the themes that my colleague Bennett, the National Lawyers Guild, drew out specifically around suppressing dissent. There were other things that happened in Egypt that people and officials have threatened to happen here again in Chicago, like shutting down social media networks, right? We've all heard about the role of technology in enabling communications in these kinds of settings when people are clamoring for their rights if the city shuts down the social media networks or disrupts the transportation infrastructure, like has also happened in other places. In the U.S., it's interesting to think about the one city that I know that actually has combined those two things, was San Francisco, of all places, that both disrupted the Bart Service and shut down the social media to it in the wake of a protest last fall. And we see these same kinds of tactics threatened again here. Ben and our colleagues at the AFSC talked about the sit-down-and-shut-up ordinance that was passed here earlier this year, not just to deal with the upcoming mobilizations, but also to set a new baseline, a derogation of First Amendment rights for all future demonstrations going forward in this city. So now, I think the demonstrations around NATO are not just about addressing militarism abroad, they are also about asserting your rights as Americans here at home. The same rights for which service members, like my colleague who will be speaking with you, Aaron, in a minute, from Iraq Veterans Against the War, have risked their lives to supposedly defend abroad. You are being called on to defend peacefully here. Just two more thoughts. You know, we've heard about all these false bases for alarm. There are some real reasons for alarm in our society, too, and you here in Chicago are very intimately acquainted with many of them. This might be the same city in which you just lost many of your First Amendment rights. This is the very same city that just adopted the country's first torture-free zone, right? You all know what lawlessness looks like in Chicago. It wears a Chicago Police Department badge, and not very long ago, it was involved in torture. Human rights violations here at home impacting your communities, and in the wake of organizing, your community stood tall and secured a city resolution. You know, there's John Burgess in jail, even if not for torture. The police command are responsible for tortures in jail. You see in that a demonstration of what your power can look like, right? And you can build that same kind of power around any set of issues, whether it's ending police torture, whether it's ending racial profiling, whether it's ending Dragnet surveillance, whether it's restoring your own First Amendment rights. You can start with NATO, and you can push beyond. And I'm very excited to see this city standing tall. We live in a time of global struggle of peoples around the world to dislodge our respective establishments. That's true in Burma. That's true in Egypt. You see it alive today in Syria. It's here alive in America, alive and well in Chicago, the struggle of political activists like yourselves, the struggle for peace and justice activists, the struggle for people of faith, for environmentalists, for anyone who would classify themselves as Muslim. All of our different sectors are suffering this degradation of the rule of law, and I'll just thank you again for raising your voices and making me proud to be an American.
Thank you, Shahid. Now, we're going to ask Aaron Hughes to come up and talk about the situation with the veterans, the people who are actually being put in harm's way by our U.S. Attorney.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here, and thank you for hosting all of us in this beautiful church. It's an honor to be here. 18 veterans commit suicide every day. The percentage of veterans that commit suicide has increased 150% over the last 10 years. Today, 17% of the service members that are in Afghanistan are on psychotropic drugs. 20 to 50% of the service members that are in the military right now are already diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder, military sexual trauma, traumatic brain injury. Right now, 1/3 of the women that serve in the military are sexually assaulted by their peers. 48% of those reports of sexual assaults are by males. When it comes to unemployment, veterans have 28% unemployment, from my job description, and 1/3 of the people that are on the streets are veterans. That's to say that this military is going abroad and saying that it can build democracy, can't even take care of its own troops. I saw that firsthand in my deployment to Iraq in 2003. I went over believing in the mission. I went over gung-ho, motivated, huwa. I remember getting up to the border of Iraq and Kuwait, seeing a big concrete barrier, said, "Be aware of children in roadway and 1,000 meters." That's because as soon as you cross over to the border of Iraq, you would see kids lining the streets, willing to jump onto a semi-truck to get food or water. And I thought, huwa? These are the kids I'm here to help. Get rid of this terrible dictator. Help set up schools. Help build roads. Put this country back to work. But those kids were still on the side of the road six months later. Those kids were still on the side of the road 12 months later, and 13 months later, and 14 months later, and 15 months later. And in my last convoy out of Iraq, my squad leader, Sergeant Holland, who happens to be a correctional officer, sometimes I never thought he had a soul. He cried for three hours, three hours, just asking, "What have we been doing? What have we been doing?" What have we been doing? What have we been doing? What have we been doing?" I feel like this is a record that's on repeat in my mind every single day, what have we been doing? And I know that's on the record of all these veterans that are returning. Because when we went over to Afghanistan, and when we go over to Iraq, and when we went over to Iraq, we didn't look at the Iraqi people or the Afghan people as our brothers, as our sisters, reaching out to them with open arms. We pointed our rifles at them, we called them Hajis. We racialized the whole thing. We abused the women in our unit. We degraded our whole system. The whole system's built on patriarchy, built on racism, built on materialism. So I'm over there in Iraq, and I'm thinking I'm going to build a democracy, and something I had failed to ever really think about was the fact, when I went through basic training, no one ever talked to me about democracy, no one ever talked to me about freedom. They taught me how to kill people, that's what they taught me. And now every single day, our country continues to ask these soldiers to go overseas and build democracies, or build schools, build things that they were never trained to do, because they were trained to kill people. That's what you learn in basic training. What makes the grass grow green, Sergeant? Blood makes the grass grow green, Sergeant? That's what you learn in the military. With that, our organization is coming together at the NATO summit to ceremoniously return our medals. Medals that were awarded to us under the Global War on Terrorism, a war that's based on lies and failed policies. The coin doctrine that was spoke of earlier, sane doctrine that was used in South and Central America, and it failed. How many more Afghan civilians? How many service members? How many more people have to die? Last summer, or last spring, when we watched the uprising in Egypt, I was moved. I saw the military in Egypt stand down, and I saw the people rise up, and I saw that's how democracies are built. That's how democracies are built. Have we learned nothing from Martin Luther King? Have we learned nothing from Gandhi? How can we let these generals continually see espoused that they can provide this security when they can't even protect their own service members? So that's really all I have to say. These tokens that we're given to feel good, you know, we come home, welcome for your, thank you for your service. Thank you for going over to another country, looking at someone, not seeing them as a human being, being able to look them straight in the face, being willing to pull the trigger, being willing to kill, thank you for your service. Here's this medal, Global War on Terrorism. We don't want them anymore. We want justice, and we want to start healing, and we think healing starts with just acknowledgement that all this was a mistake, and I don't want to see any more people die for a mistake. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to begin first just by thanking Trinity Episcopal Church for holding this community forum, and for also welcoming the protesters who are trying to create a new world, a new Chicago, a new Jerusalem, if you will. And, you know, it's pretty rare indeed that a church or any institution is actually out there practicing what they preach these days, right? So I really truly want to thank Trinity Episcopal Church for doing this. We kind of have this mindset about the 1960s freedom movement, that all churches were involved, right? All black churches were involved in that movement. But I recently heard Reverend James Lawson say that only about 10 to 15% of the black church participated in the freedom movement. And I think that's instructive, because I think it's important for us to realize, we don't have to get everybody out there, but it's, you know, the key number of people, critical mass, do have to get out there. And, you know, Reverend Lawson was somebody who was very instrumental in the 1960s freedom movement, and who also, you know, Dr. King called the greatest non-violence theorist in the world. So, you know, he was directly involved and knew how many churches were truly involved in it. So I want to thank Trinity for practicing what it preaches. And I also am here representing National Nurses United, we represent 170,000 direct-care nurses around the country. Here in Chicago, we represent the VA nurses, we represent University of Chicago, Jackson Park, and Cook County nurses. And, you know, NNU believes in social unionism, which means that we believe that we have an obligation not just to fight for our own members, but to fight for the entire working class, all working people. And so one of the components, one of the ways that comes out, manifests itself, is that we're fighting for what we call a Main Street Contract, which is essentially a larger social contract, which we believe that all Americans deserve. For a secure retirement with the ability to retire in dignity, good housing and protection from hunger, a safe and healthy environment, and a just taxation system where corporations and the wealthy pay their fair share. Now, how's that, the social contract, sound? Yeah, right? Very basic, right? So one of the ways that, you know, so in a sense, the social unionism comes out by asking our nurses to not just care for our patients at the bedside, but also in the larger community, before patients become patients and after patients leave the hospital. So a more holistic version of health. And so that's part of the reason why we're fighting for this Main Street Contract, is because every day, we actually see patients coming into the hospitals with higher and higher acuity. Other words, they're coming in sicker and sicker, partly because we know that they're dealing with more and more economic problems and all these other problems that are all interconnected. And so that's where we're coming from in this fight with NATO here. We actually moved our convention here this year, we call that convention the Staff Nurse Assembly. So we will be here just before NATO begins, and to kick off this whole NATO protest, we are on May 18th, at 11:00 a.m., we're going to be having a march and a rally. And in the back corner on the table over there, I have placed more information on that, and it's in English and Spanish, and you can see, okay, great. So you can pick that up and learn more about that, and you'll see there's an ever-growing list of organizations that are participating and sponsoring that protest. And one of the things we're urging and we're fighting for is what we call a financial transaction tax. In Europe, they call that a Robin Hood tax, which is quite simple, that while this speculation and trading on Wall Street that caused much of this economic damage, we're pushing to have a tax on all this trade, one, to lower speculation and the causes of which led to this economic crisis, but also to pay for the social contract we just talked about. So that's what we believe is the first step towards heading away towards healing America by taxing Wall Street and moving towards a society where we can have indeed a new social contract with the American people. So I invite all of you to join us on May 18th, and we're actually going to have 1,000 nurses from all across the country here in Chicago wearing their red, NNU, and so we encourage you to come and join us. And I just want to end, I'm trying to be brief, because I know it's getting late, and also we want to invite discussion afterwards, I'm told. So I want to just end with an African proverb, which I think is relevant for the situation, and it says, "When you pray, move your feet." So I hope that you'll join us on May 18th by, indeed praying by moving your feet and joining NNU. Thank you so much.
Now, John Marshall, are you still here? No? And you wanted, we're going to have you close the remarks, your formal remarks, if you'd like?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In 1 John 3:17-18, it says that if anyone has material possessions and sees his brother in need but has no pity on him, how can the love of God be in him? Dear children, let us not love with words or tongue, but with actions and in truth. What we are doing, and I understand, you know, what you guys are doing, but what we are doing here is literally opening our arms to you in order to try to deal with the folks that we deal with in terms of our mission, you know? And it's not so much the war, but in the aggression, but it's the residuals, you know, the people who are made poor because of the war, the people who are made refugees because of the war, the people who are, you know, who are made sick, and not only because of the wars, but because of those folks in the world. And, you know, when we were approached with this, we were, like I said before, how could we not open our arms as an Episcopal Church to all of us? So we're going to have the people that we're going to be hosting are folks that I don't know if you know, some of you might know them, they're called the Grassroots Caravan, G-R-A-S-S-R-O-U-T-E-S caravan, and they're bikers that are going to be coming here from Madison, Wisconsin, and stopping off in Milwaukee and getting here on Friday, late Friday afternoon, and, you know, basically securing their bikes along our gate and camping here on Friday night, Saturday, and then Sunday night, and leaving on Monday. So we're happy to have them, we're happy that you guys are looking to try to deal with the folks that we love, love to deal with, the people that are hurting and hoping in this world, and we hope, you know, that our hospitality suits you. Thank you.[1768.33]